City Council Meeting, today is Monday, October 26. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If I can have everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni.
President.
Ms. Manalo.
President.
Dr. Rod.
Here.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Present. Thank you much, ma'am city clerk. Okay, the first item on the agenda for this evening is a presentation and with us we have Ms. Victoria Mabilan of the Daily City Public Library Associates to tell us about Daily City Youth Poet Laureate. Ms. Mabilan.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'm really excited to tell you guys about this program. It's something brand new and I am, yeah, I think you guys are going to be happy about it. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Hold on one minute, let me make sure I find the right thing. Okay, so can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. So this is the brand new Daily City Youth Poet Laureate Program. Oh, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention that my board member of the DCPLA, Amy Hayes, is also on this call. So she's in there. So I just wanted to say hello to her and thank you for the support. So, sorry, going back to my presentation. So the Daily City Public Library Associates, I know all of City Council and everyone is familiar with us, but in case there's anybody watching who isn't, we do fundraising and outreach for the Daily City Public Libraries. So because of that, we are partnering with Daily City Public Library and another company called Urban Word, which I'll tell you about a little bit in a moment, to do this program. So, sorry, let me figure out the best way to... Okay, so the National Youth Poet Laureate Program is aimed at elevating youth voices that are committed to artistic excellence, civic engagement, and social justice. It was founded in 2008 by Urban Word, an award-winning youth literary arts and youth development organization that collaborates with local youth literary arts organizations across the country to provide platforms for youth voices. So this is a National Youth Poet Laureate Program that Urban Word established and by partnering with them, we have access to the Greater Youth Poet Laureate Program. So we will have our local one and then eventually when we've gotten our program established, they can actually go on to compete at the national level and, you know, possibly even be named the National Youth Poet Laureate for the whole country. So we think that's really great that we're already partnering with an established group. They have a program all set out and they're giving us a lot of support with just advice about how to run the program. It's basically their program that we are participating in. So they have certain rules that we have to abide by. One of them is that it's not just about the poetry, it's also about civic engagement. So, you know, there are two aspects for the Youth Poet Laureate Program. There's the poetry, it can be raps, spoken word, anything really that you could kind of see as poetry. But also, we asked them on their application to tell us a little bit about what they have done, you know, as far as civic engagement, things that they have... And it doesn't have to be that they're the leader of this or that, but just anything they've done to work to make our community better. So the rubric that Urban Word gives us to judge the program when we do the judging, it actually, they give points for both the poetry itself and also for the other civic engagement, you know, sorry, aspects of the youth's resume. So the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate will be the first program of its type in Daily City and actually the very first one in San Mateo County. So I'm really excited about that because I feel really proud to have Daily City be a leader in this and I'm hoping that maybe with time, some other San Mateo County cities will join us and we could have a regional competition, we could collaborate with them. It celebrates teen poets who live or attend school in Daily City and exhibit a commitment to artistic excellence, civic engagement, leadership, and social justice. So a lot of times the Youth Poet Laureates are required to have a residency in the particular city, but the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate Committee decided that we wanted to expand that a little bit because, for instance, we have, you know, Pacifica students who go to Jefferson High School or, you know, we have Daily City students who attend private school in the city. So we wanted to make sure that we can have the applicants be as broad as possible, but was it very important that they have some connection to Daily City? So any, you know, any student who lives in Broadmoor, for instance, but go, you know, technically they're not Daily City, but if they attend one of our schools, then they are very much eligible to do this because the main thing is being a representative of Daily City and we feel like students who attend our schools have a deep connection and pride and love for our city. So, and as I mentioned before, the municipal partner is the Daily City Public Library because in the long run, the DCPLA is here mainly to support the library. So we see the Youth Poet Laureate Program as sort of an extension of that, you know, something that's related to literary arts with the library, but something that we're kind of doing on our own, you know, the, an idea that we had and we're really appreciative of the library for being willing to help us with that. So this is something I think is really awesome. We have figured out a few things that are sort of incentives for our Youth Poet Laureate and rewards and they will each, the, when they, the person who is named the Youth Poet Laureate will receive a $5,000 award from the DCPLA. They will also have the honor of representing Daily City at community events between May 2021, which is when we will, well, we'll name them in April, but the term starts May 2021 through May 2022. So right now, you know, we're not sure what that will look like. I know there's not so many in-person events, but, you know, we would love, certainly in the future, when we are back to doing in-person events, we hope that our Daily City Poet Laureate will be able to come and perform and be, you know, a very visible representative of our youth at these events. So another thing that they, benefit that they receive from the National Youth Poet Laureate Program is that they will get five of their poems publicated, sorry, published in their National Youth Poet Laureate Annual Anthology. So the picture that I'm showing here is an example of the one from 2020 and it's featuring 16-year-old Mira Das Gupta, who is the Youth Poet Laureate of New York City and this year was named the Youth Poet Laureate for the whole country. So, you know, it's a really nice publication and they will give us some copies. I talked to the library, they said they'd be happy to put them in our collection and our Youth Poet Laureate will also receive five copies of that anthology as well. And as you can see from the, you know, the image that I showed here, it's a nice-looking publication. So the submission requirements are they have to have five original written pieces and those will need to be free from profanity. Like, we'd like to keep it pretty open, but we are trying to keep this something that, you know, that is representing Daily City. So, you know, the topics can be open, but profanity is the only thing that we're kind of trying to, trying to keep that, you know, just to keep it sort of family-friendly. And then a resume with accomplishments and public services, services I mentioned earlier. So the application deadline is January 31st, 2021 and we have actually, we have revamped our DCPLA website. So if you go to dcpl.org and click on there, you will see a little button that mentions it and there's an online application that you can use and in that you tell a little bit about yourself and your accomplishments and then you can submit your poetry through, by emailing through that so that, so that you have the formatting the way that you want. The applicants must meet the following criteria. They must reside or attend school in Daily City. They must be between the ages of 13 and 18 by the application deadline and they will serve as laureate for the program year May 2021 through May 2022. So that means that sometimes this may actually close it off to a lot of high school seniors, unfortunately, just because they need to be here and be able to be active. You know, it's not just being named the Youth Poet Laureate, it's also showing up at events and, you know, representing the city. So you kind of need to be able to be around or, you know, even if you go off to college, if you, you need to be able to come back. Like, if you move to New York and we never see you again, then that's kind of not what we're trying to do here. So, you know, definitely if anyone has questions about that, they can email me or call me and we can talk about that some more. Oh, so the whole idea for the Youth Poet Laureate was brought to me by San Mateo County Poet Laureate Eileen Casonetto and I was just asking her for some ideas about how the DCPLA could stay relevant and engage with the public during these times when, you know, I'm stuck here in my office, in my garage, at home. And so she was the one who suggested, you know, I would love for somebody to do a Youth Poet Laureate and I jumped right on that because I loved the idea. So Urban Word suggests that you do a workshop to help the students with their applications. Maybe there might be some wonderful poets out there, but they may feel a little insecure about having their portfolio of poetry ready to submit for something important like this. So Eileen was kind enough to agree to host a workshop. It's totally free and it is optional. If any applicants feel like they're ready to go and they don't need this, that's totally fine. But, you know, for anybody who wants to learn, you know, a little bit more about the art of poetry, maybe we just could use a little guidance in submitting a portfolio of their poetry to us. She's doing two days, Wednesdays, December 2nd and December 9th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. So if anybody's interested in that, they can register by emailing me at info@dcpl.org by December 1st. At the end of our process of the program, we will plan on having a commencement event. It will be a performance by the finalists and the naming of the first Daily City Youth Poet Laureate. We've decided to combine that with a celebration of the 10-year anniversary of the Daily City Public Library Associates, which is coming up this year. We are assuming that we're not going to be able to have an in-person event this year. So we've committed to doing some sort of virtual, like webinar. We haven't totally worked out the details, but we want it to be something really amazing. We really want to honor our new Youth Poet Laureate and also give a nod to the history of the DCPLA through the years. We feel like this is just perfect timing as far as, you know, so we, you know, we're not expecting to be able to do our St. Patrick's Day luncheon and crazy about cards like we have in the past. So we kind of see this as like, this is a special year. It's the launch of our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate Program and also the 10-year anniversary of the DCPLA. So we're going to do what we can to make it a really fabulous program and I'm really hoping in future years, it will be an in-person event that all of, you know, City Council and everyone, you know, we hope to have a huge turnout and have it really be a nice event. So thank you so much for listening to my presentations. I'm a little nervous, so I'm a little like, misspeaking. But if anybody has any questions or anything they want to ask, feel free to email me or call me, info@dcpl.org or you can call me at 415-596-8194. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mabilan. I'm sure you're going to get a couple of comments and questions from council, but before we move on, I'd like to ask Amy, did you want to add anything or your thoughts?
No, we're just really excited to host this event next year and like Victoria said, it's the first of its kind in Daily City. And so, you know, we're looking to get as many applicants as possible to compete for the title. So thanks for hosting us tonight.
Great.
Thank you, Amy. All right, I'll open it up to council for any comments.
Thank you, Mayor. May I make a comment? I think it's amazing to have this program, most especially even without COVID. But with COVID, I think, you know, young people are looking for ways to express themselves and be able to also highlight, you know, their work. And I love that it was thoughtful as well to be inclusive of students that go to school in Daily City and our residents so that there's an array of young people that we can reach out to. I'm excited to see the applicants and also hear from the Youth Poet Laureate in the future. But I love this program and I think, you know, it really puts another opportunity for young people to have a voice and to be able to express themselves and really looking forward to it. So thank you for your presentation, Victoria, and Amy, for your work on DCPLA. This is wonderful to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. May I? Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, Victoria, you jumped on it and Eileen and you, I know you gelled together. Thank you, Amy. This is a great board. You guys are forward-thinking and I know that creativity must really flow all over the place with all you guys together. I can't even imagine. And that the fact that our youth now more than ever, I know the Vice Mayor had said that, I just want to echo that, they need this and that we need to support. It's our duty to support them and give them a venue. And there's so much talent out there that we already know that. I remember when Victoria was engaged, I think it was Rosie Tahara, and they even opened it up just at Ceremone for just a small bit for young people. And the talent that outflows from those youths is just incredible. You just sit in awe. So looking forward to the engagement. I think the virtual thing is fantastic. I know we wish it could be in person and maybe we will in the future, but I think it's going to be pretty fantastic just by that because they're used to this now and it may, those who are a little bit more shy to branch out a little more, give them a little steps, come out and the fact that Eileen is able to do a workshop to try to mentor them into that, which we know how fabulous she is and the board. So thank you to the board. Thank you, Victoria, for your incredible leadership and you guys' forward vision and to take care of the youth in our community. And I love the fact that it doesn't matter where they're at, where they're in Daily City and they come to these schools, they're all our children and all our youth and that we want to take care of them and nurture them and give them anything we can. And first in the county, this is way fabulous. Hello, shout out. So forward-thinking Daily City. So thank you, DCPLA, my best, and Amy. I know you're excited. I've heard great things about you being on the board, so looking forward to it and count us to be there. Thank you so much and see you soon. Ten years.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rod, go ahead, please.
Thank you to Victoria and Amy for putting this on. Poetry has been something that has been part of my life and part of my own identity in terms of using the words and how it, how you become the words that you say, right? And I'm glad that this, this, this program is coming to Daily City. It reminds me of a poetry that I wrote and it was called "From Poetry to Policy." A poet is a policymaker. Every stanza rhyme and critical stance shifts people's hearts. A poet is a, is a policymaker. Every stanza rhyme and critical stance shifts people's hearts and minds, right? And it, it's just things that I just, you know, I'm really proud that we're putting this on. But I just have a couple of questions. Um, maybe Victoria, you could, you can answer these. Um, does it matter what type of style of poetry? Can it be spoken word style or traditional, um, poetry delivery?
Yeah, not at all. They can, any, they're, they're not limited at all. And in the, the flyer that I'll distribute and ask all of you to share, um, it, it mentions like rap, spoken word. It could be really anything that could be construed as poetry. We'd like to keep it as broad as possible.
And then another question would be, um, are the interviews just written or will there be an audition as well?
So that's one thing where the committee is still kind of trying to work out. Um, we have actually recruited a number of judges who are leaders in the poetry community and education community. But, um, since it's a new program, we're still kind of working out some of the details. We just wanted to start advertising as soon as possible because we wanted really have enough time to get the word out to every and anybody. But, um, I think that, that, um, there, there will probably be a couple of rounds of judging and, um, and it'll be, some of it will be like without knowing the name. Um, I, I, I definitely see in future years, I think that it would make sense to be sort of an interview, you know, sort of thing as well, but, but yeah, we're still kind of working on those details.
And then one more question. Sorry, Victoria.
No, I'm happy to talk about it.
So I have some incoming freshmen at Skyline College that are eighteen. Can, are they eligible if they turn like nineteen in twenty twenty one?
They are eligible as long as they're eighteen by January thirty first.
Got you. Okay.
Just because, you know, it is supposed to be a youth poet laureate program, so they have to kind of have sort of a, a cutoff for that. But that does actually include some eighth graders. So they kind of, you know, start, you know, it's kind of heading more, you know, like I said, the, the issue with some of the older students is just if they became, become named youth poet laureate and then immediately leave the area, they're not really going to be able to fulfill their duties, like the, the reason that they aren't named that. So, yeah, but as long, they can, if they're, if they turn nineteen on February first, they're in. They just have to be just that application deadline.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Any other, um, comments? Okay, um, Ms. Babalang, I'd like to say, uh, echo the rest of what council has said already. Uh, what I got out of this, uh, oh, and Amy, thank you so much. What I got out of this is four Rs. And you may not know it, but you mentioned them during your presentation. Uh, the first one is relevance. This is so relevant at this particular time and with what's going on. And I am so happy. And, uh, it, this will go to show based upon who, uh, who is the winner and, uh, all those who come out to, uh, put in an application. Number two, you use the word that I'm always so fond of, and that's the term rubric. Rubric means what good looks like. So rather than having to reinvent the wheel, it appears to me that, uh, a rubric has already, uh, been created to, uh, have a guideline and to assist in the selection of a laureate. And, uh, just creating a rubric in itself alone is very, very difficult. The third R, I like the idea, uh, which you made mention, possibility of regional competitions, not just only for, uh, uh, Daily City, but you also made mention of someone willing to come and help, and that's San Mateo. That could be San Mateo County. And I can see this expanding so far. I mean, obviously the person's going to be competing to become a national laureate, but at the same time, this sets the foundation for, uh, statewide and et cetera. So I, I think so much is going to come of this. And the last R that you made mention, which I really appreciate, is a representative for Daily City. I mean, not only will this program, uh, and what it does for the people, awareness, the community, but also it's going to assist in putting and keeping Daily City on the map. So with all that said, I would like to thank you both for moving forward with this program. And please be careful what you wish for, because I'm still waiting for that St. Patrick's event and the crazy about cars and, uh, you know, I'm optimistic that we will be over this, so I'm looking forward to it. So again, kudos to you and everyone of D C P L A. Thank you so much.
I want to say thank you again to all of you, you know, city council for letting me come and tell you about this. I, I waited to launch it because I wanted to tell you guys first. So I kind of sent out a little teaser, but I, I, I wanted to make sure that city council was, was part of this. I hope that you'll, you know, invite our youth poet laureate to events and to speak. Maybe, you know, whenever we have city events, we would, we would love to have our youth poet laureate play a part in that. Um, I want, I want to say thank you to Amy again for coming here to support. And I want to give a really big thank you to all of the rest of the board as well of the D C P L A. You know, I, I brought this idea to them and they were like, let's do it. So, you know, I couldn't do this without the support of my team. You know, they, they are the ones who really are, they make the, the decisions. I'm the one who kind of goes, hey, can we do this? I'll, I'll make it happen, but I can't do anything without them. So I'm extremely grateful to the board for supporting this idea and pushing it forward, for, um, agreeing to give a, uh, you know, like, I think it's a pretty generous award to the students. Um, we're hoping that, that that will be a great incentive for them. You know, maybe it could be used as a scholarship or, you know, really, we, we hope that it would be used for something very beneficial. So thanks again for having me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Victoria and Amy, and, uh, we're looking forward to it. And please pass a word on to Mr. Nurus. We miss him this evening. And whenever we see him, it's generally even good news. So let him know we miss him this evening as well. Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. With that being said, I'd like to, um, move forward on our agenda. The next item is the approval of the minutes for October twelfth, twenty twenty. Uh, now entertaining motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, we have a first, there a second?
Second.
Uh, second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, the, uh, minutes have been approved. The next item is the approval of the agenda for this evening.
Motion to approve agenda.
We have a first, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Dr. Rod, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda for this evening is the consent agenda. It looks like we have, uh, uh, a few items. Uh, any, um, our entertain a motion for the agenda, the se, uh, consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to entertain, uh, pulling a few items so for, because they're actually positive for our public. And that would be a quick ones for one through four.
One, two, three, yeah. Four. Okay. Is there any other further, uh, items, uh, amongst council? So what I'm hearing, uh, entertain a motion to pull items one, two, three and four. That leaves, uh, the rest of the items on the consent agenda for approval. May I have a, um, a motion, please? Okay, no motion. Heard. I'll repeat the motion. Uh, all items on the consent agenda will be approved with exception of items number one, two, three and four. Is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve the agenda for five and six, um, excluding one through four.
Uh, that's correct. Okay. So are you making the motion, council member?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rod. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda has been approved with exception of items one, two, three and four. And we will begin with item number one. And, and, uh, is that, um, Ms. Malp, is that, uh, your item?
That is actually a finance item and I'm going to turn it over to Matthew Jewell. This is, I, maybe Matthew, your first appearance at a council meeting?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
Yes, sir. Uh, good experience for Matthew. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Uh, welcome, welcome, Matthew. I saw your, uh, picture there and that says, okay, now I know who you are. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Um, this is a basically, um, authorize the city manager or designate, um, to execute an agreement between Tyler Technologies and the city of Daily City to develop an online, uh, citizen self portal. Um, this is an amendment to, um, a council approved move, um, allowing us to move entergov to a cloud, uh, hosted solution that the council, um, approved in April thirteenth, twenty twenty, part of resolution number twenty, uh, dash forty-four. Um, what this will allow us to do is to create a pour, an online portal on our website, allowing the public, um, not only residents, business owners, contractors to, um, do some of the stuff that, uh, they would normally be able to do in city hall. Um, but currently they are not allowed to do that in city hall, um, for some reason, not sure why. Um, but, uh, this will, uh, not alleviate that for the future. So when we do open, they will still be able to come in and, and do all that stuff. This will just make that process easier. Um, the, the cost for this implementation is, uh, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, which includes a one-time charge of eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for professional services related to the initial configuration and deployment of that portal. Um, there are two reoccurring charges with this product, uh, project. One charge is thirty thousand dollars for entergov assist complete, uh, which will allow Tyler Technologies to, um, work with current city staff to examine our current practices and streamline those processes, including workflows, fee schedule updates, um, as well as, uh, bi-weekly meetings to plan future configurations and review the latest changes and improvements. Um, this service will be evaluated each year to ensure that Daily City is benefiting from these services. Um, the other reoccurring charge is for five thousand dollars for entergov virtual labs, which is a training module that will be open to all users uh, of entergov, allowing city staff to train in the use of entergov for any major changes. Go live and be able to train, uh, newly hired staff who utilize entergov on a daily basis. Um, and then the fiscal impact of the citizen self service portal is fifty-three thousand, five, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, as I stated before. And adequate funding already exists in the, um, information services division budget for the six months to share. Staff recommends authorizing the city manager or designate to execute an agreement between Tyler Technologies and City of Daily City to develop an online citizen self service portal. And then I'm available to answer any questions from the mayor or council members.
Thank you, Mr. Jewell. Are there any questions from council at this time?
Uh, just a quick one, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, uh, thank you, Mr. Jewell. You did an excellent job. You would never know it's your first time. Hopefully not your last and that, um, thank you, city manager, and I believe Stephen or whoever did make the decision. But for clarification for people that have contacted me, it doesn't take away from the other ways of being able to do your, your processing of, of all these things. Actually, it enhances it and gives people, so it's like a win-win.
Correct.
Yeah.
You are correct.
So it makes it easier on the staff, easier and the time efficiency is better for processing. So people do not have to wait um, as long, as long as they have access. But for those who do not have access, they will still be able to do it the other ways. And especially when we open. So I appreciate that you guys made it all encompassing for everybody, those that don't have a digital divide still, uh, no matter what the age group or income level is. And this will help to everyone. So thank you, Mr. Jewell. I, I'm, I'm excited that again, that Daily City is moving forward and, uh, forward thinking city manager as always and, um, is, is during this COVID, it's made things more to make plans for efficiency. So, um, and that helps on all, all ends for costs as well. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Excellent job.
Thank you.
The one that's like against abortion and all that stuff.
Okay. So are there any other, uh, questions at this time? Uh, entertain a motion to accept my item number one on the consent agenda.
Motion to accept item number one on the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Rod, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Item number one, uh, has carried. Thank you so much, Mr. Jewell. Okay, the next item, uh, is authorization to apply to the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five. Item number two. And, uh, would that be further also, Ms. Malp?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that would be my item.
Oh, oh, Mr. Jewell. Okay, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead, Mr. Jewell.
Great. Uh, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the item before you tonight is to authorize staff to submit a grant application uh, to the San Mateo County Transportation Authority for the pedestrian and bicycle program, uh, cycle five uh, for fiscal years twenty twenty-one and fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Uh, the project is the John Daly Boulevard, Skyline Boulevard, uh, pedestrian connection. Uh, a little bit of background, um, in January, uh, in June of nineteen ninety-eight, voters, uh, approved, uh, the ballot measure for half cent sales tax, uh, for twenty years. And, uh, in November of two thousand and four, uh, the voters re-approved the continuation of that half cent sales tax, which is measure A, uh, for another twenty-five years. So that goes out to twenty twenty-three. Uh, also more recently in twenty eighteen, uh, the voters approved uh, which also, um, collects a half cent sales tax, uh, to implement additional transportation measures. Uh, and that goes out to twenty forty-nine. Uh, on August, uh, seventh, twenty twenty, the Transportation Authority issued a call for projects for pedestrian and bicycle program funds. A total of about approximately eight point one million dollars is avail, available for, pedestrians and bicycle programs for the two fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Uh, the applications were due to the Transportation Authority on September twenty-one, twenty twenty. And the resolution of local support for the project needs to be submitted no later than November second of twenty twenty. There's, um, two types of projects, uh, under the call for project. Uh, one is a infrastructure project and another is a non-infrastructure project. The infrastructure projects require a ten percent minimum local match. And for non-infrastructure projects, it requires a fifty percent minimum local match. Uh, for the infrastructure project, staff did identify the John Daly Boulevard and Skyline Boulevard pedestrian connection project. Uh, this project creates a sidewalk gap closure. And so it constructs a new sidewalk along John Daly Boulevard uh, from the Westlake neighborhood to the intersection of John Daly and Skyline Boulevard. Uh, and basically creates, um, an access so that, uh, residents can get to Thornton Beach. Estimated cost for the project is seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars total. Uh, the grant application that we're requesting is six hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars with an additional local match of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. At this time, there's no appropriate appropriation needed. If the city is successful in getting the grant, then we will come back to city council at that time, uh, to request, uh, the appropriations of the local matching fund of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, uh, two hundred dollars. And typically the funds, um, for this type of project would come from city gas tax money, which is measure A and or measure W. Uh, with that, staff does recommend that the city council authorize staff to submit the application for the John Daly Boulevard. for the John Daly Boulevard, Skyline Boulevard Pedestrian Connection Project to the Transportation Authority for the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Are there any questions for Mr. Chu at this time?
Just a quick one, Ms. Chu, thank you very much. And this improves the safety aspect. Does this help that area? You know that that clock crossway on John Daly Boulevard that's connected to the, I'm familiar with that, has that fence? It's kind of odd way, the way you try to cross the street to get to Skyline. Is that particularly, does that include that area?
Yes. So Councilmember Di Giovanni, there has, there is a cow trans fence, kind of a long Skyline Boulevard that people have cut and and
Yes.
through the neighborhood and cross Skyline Boulevard. This project is to help address that situation so that there will be a formal access along John Daly Boulevard getting to the intersection, and then they can use the crosswalk to cross Skyline Boulevard. This project is identified in our master plan as well, so.
That's fantastic, because I remember that I think I had spoken with you, Mr. Stolti, and then about some people complaining that lived in the neighborhood and how unsafe it was when people were crossing. So that actually is something that has been looked at a long time by the residents. So totally appreciate it. And again, fantastic. So improving the safety is very important for our residents and those. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time from Mr. Chu on item? Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion for the item for authorization to move forward for an application for the grant.
Motion to approve?
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? And that motion passes. Moving on to item number three on the consent agenda, authorization to apply to the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five. And I see it's it's provision zero community outreach. So I guess it's almost similar, but Mr. Chu, can you let us know the difference from item number two, please?
Yeah, yes, I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and yes, you are absolutely correct. This grant application is is for the same program as the previous item. However, this is for a non-infrastructure project. And so the staff identified vision zero community outreach as the project. And because it's a non-infrastructure project, the minimum local match is a fifty percent local match. The intent is to do community outreach, create outreach tools and branding material to support the recently adopted division zero action plan that council approved. The grant application we're requesting is fifty thousand dollars with a fifty thousand dollar local match. Also, this project also does not need any appropriation at this time. We'll we'll need to wait and see if we're successful in securing the grant, and if we are, then at that time, we would return to council. Staff does recommend that council also authorize the submission of this grant as well for the vision zero community outreach program for the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, not a question, but also that, you know, after we approved the vision zero. So I guess, Mr. Chu, this is the next step when we were, after we approved the vision zero. And we have, we were going to try to form the, you guys are forming your committee, the committee for the city.
Yeah, actually, there's there's many steps with the vision zero action plan that was approved by city council. We've already started to implement some of the measures. So for example, our bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee, they now start talking about projects and accidents and, you know, trying to gather data. We did do a project recently where we created some striping modifications in an effort to improve vision zero. But one of the main components of vision zero is to do outreach. And and so, you know, the funding requests would help help a long way in terms of being able to create some of these additional programs and branding material to to start implementing that outreach.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chu, and great job on that, and happy to be a part of that vision zero, looking forward. I think we were talking the other day to Kevin when he was here for the e-waste. And we're all excited. It keeps bringing up the vision zero. So looking forward to all the projects and the success. So thank you so much. Thank everyone. Thank you. Great work.
All right, any further questions of Mr. Chu on item number three on the agenda, consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve item number three.
Motion to approve item number three?
Okay, we have a, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, item number three on the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to item number four, accepting and appropriating transportation for Clean Air County Program Manager Funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And who has this one?
That's mine as well, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Chu, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, as you can see, my staff has been very busy going after a lot of grant applications. So I definitely need to acknowledge their efforts recently. This particular item is to accept and appropriate the transportation for Clean Air County Program Managers Fund in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Daily City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. Staff also recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the funding agreement and other documents necessary for grant fund reimbursement. So the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, they have the ability to levy fees on on motor vehicles. And the funds that they collect are referred to as the T F C A funds. And those funds are intended to be used to support reduction of air pollution from motor vehicles. In San Mateo County, C K is the program manager for the T F C A funds. And on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, C K issued a call for projects. On August twenty-one, twenty twenty, our staff submitted a grant application for the Daily City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. The application requested a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and also committed twenty-four thousand dollars in local matching funds. C K received a total of ten project applications. And out of those ten, four projects were selected to be fully funded, including Daily City's project. The Daily City Crosswalk Enhancement Project will install high visibility crosswalks along four major corridors, Junipero Sarah Boulevard, Callan Boulevard, Gillette Boulevard, and King Drive. All of these corridors are in the city's vision zero high injury network. And what the high injury network represents is a network where there is a high concentration of fatalities or serious injuries of pedestrians and bicycle at those locations. The total cost of this project is two hundred and four thousand dollars. And that includes design and construction of the improvements. The city, we we were selected and was awarded a grant of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with a required local match of twenty-four thousand dollars. This specific action will appropriate the hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the grant funds. And it will also transfer twenty-four thousand of available funds from the twenty twenty-one C I P account, Transportation Fund Cooperative Project Development. And they will dedicate those funds for the Daily City Crosswalk Enhancement Project. Staff does recommend that the city council accept and appropriate the T F C A County Program Funds in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Daily City Crosswalk Enhancement Project, as well as authorizing the city manager to execute the funding agreement and other documents necessary for grant fund reimbursement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. Any questions for Mr. Chu?
Mr. Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, may I? So I sit on the C K, I'm very, I mean, very, when the projects come through in Daily City, I always see that we always have something we're applying for. And you're right, your staff has been very busy. And thank my colleagues at C K for always approving. They're very supportive of Daily City. And when you put forth the grants and recognize that with the, our most densely populated city with the vision zero along with this, and that in itself proves that it does work, that it does work. These grants do work, and they do provide safety for our residents. And I really appreciate that, and I want to make sure that that's why I wanted these items pulled, because people need to know that when we go to sit on these regional boards, there are things that are actually happening for our own cities, and they get approved, it comes back to our city. And so very humbled to sit on their board and that they support and Shirley as well for her work as well with C K. Thank you, Mr. Chu.
Yes, you're very welcome. And one thing I'd just like to add is, as council remembers, Daily City is the first city to approve a vision zero action plan. And just having the plan really helps us when we go after these grant applications. So so, you know, thank you, council, for approving that. And again, hopefully, we can bring in some additional grant funds as a result of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Chu? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept item number four on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Motion, my vice mayor's there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rod, any further discussion? All those in favor of approval of item number four on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I heard three ayes, but somebody could have been over. So I'll ask this question. Any oppose? Okay, any abstentions? That makes it unanimous. Item number four on the consent agenda is now approved. Okay, folks, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the end of the consent agenda. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Stolti to see if we have any public appearances or communications.
Okay, let me just refresh the page.
Thank you.
No public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, the next item is any appointments, board commission, membership, or committee appointments? Anyone? All right, I would like to request the appointment to the Small Business Administration that we're putting together. I'd like to nominate and appoint Mr. Charles Hill. Mr. Hill is a storefront owner, and matter of fact, a very, very successful storefront here in Daily City. Mr. Hill has been involved in banking and been on both sides of the desk to include providing loans to the community or anyone who needs a loan to go through the loan process. And when he himself went through the loan, he learned that there appears to be some discrepancies. And as a result, he was featured in the article of Small Business Times referring to how loans are distributed, not in a way that they should be distributed, in that minorities and folks of color have been prevented from getting loans. So he realizes that there is an importance. He needs to bring that information out. I think he would be an excellent choice for the small business, for any folks now and later on, trying to start a business and also receive funding for the business. And I can see Mr. Charles Hill is online at this particular time. And what I'd like to do is open it up to Mr. Hill if he would like to say a few words. Mr. Hill, are you there?
Yes, I am, sir. Let me just take off the video. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. I just want to say thank you first and foremost for the appointment. I apologize for the, I'm going to take my so you're not two pictures. I'm still working late at the laundromat, so it's been a long week. So you may hear some noise. That's why I put my headset on. But I first want to say again, thank you, and I'm honored to be appointed by you and to be considered for the opportunity by the City of Daily City. I think, as you all can attest to, we're in very unpredictable and unprecedented times. Small businesses like myself, you know, smaller and larger, have been significantly impacted. One of the things I've learned is that small businesses employ over seventy-five percent of the workforce. And a lot of the workforce goes unnoticed when you look at the unemployment numbers, because we're not, they're not always counted. But the small businesses are very important and substantive part of the community that really impacts community in many different areas. And so I I am honored by the appointment, but I I take it seriously, and I want to bring my many years of banking experience, as you mentioned, as well as corporate experience, and now being an entrepreneur and understanding what it's really like to run a small business and some of the challenges and opportunities. I'd like to bring that to the table so that I can, you know, one, be a listener, but also assist other small businesses like myself, you know, have greater impact and have greater reach. So, you know, they can prosper as well as the community. And so, again, I'm honored, and I thank you for the appointment, and I will do everything I can to live up to the the recognition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Before we take a vote, does anyone have, any of my colleagues have any questions of Mr. Hill or comments? Okay, so with that being said, I I guess I'll defer to Madam City Attorney. Is this a vote by roll call?
It's a motion, so it can be by voice vote.
Voice vote, okay, all right, all right. So I make a motion to appoint Mr. Charles Hill to the Small Business Commission here in Daily City, and I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you to my colleagues, Mr. Hill. Thank you so much for willing to step up and want to serve and be a part of our great city. And for those who've reviewed, who don't know, I've spoken to Mr. Hill. He has appeared at one of our council meetings before in the past. And in the recent conversations with us, he really wants to do so much for Daily City to include getting the youth involved and painting the side of his building with a mural. So I, I mean, you know, I think he'll be good for our commission. So congratulations, Mr. Hill. As soon as this commission is completely set up, you will be notified, and subsequently, you will have As soon as this commission is completely set up, you will be notified, and subsequently, you will have to, you will be administered the oath of office to Daily City's Small Business Association. So thank you so much, sir.
Right, thank you for the appointment, and thank you, city council, for the approval. And I'm looking forward to serving in that capacity. Again, thank you, and if it's nothing else for me, I'll sign off.
Okay, you're good, Mr. Hill.
All right, everybody have a good evening.
Okay, all right, sir, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Are there any other appointments at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I do have an appointment for this evening for the Small Business Commission. Unfortunately, my camera is frozen, I'm using my phone, so you can hear me. But I'd like to appoint Maybel Manio to the Small Business Commission.
Okay, do you do you have anything further about her?
Sure, you know, Maybel Manio is a local to the Bay Area, she's lived and worked here since the nineteen nineties, and she understands that everyone's circumstances are unique unto themselves. Maybel will honor the communities with integrity and sincerity. Maybel understands that working collaboratively to implement and customize plans to meet Daily City's small businesses' needs is so important. Graduating with honors with a degree she created from San Francisco State University, Maybel knows that sometimes the better ways to make your own path to follow. With a vast network of vetted business professionals and an active member of the Chamber of Commerce, Maybel has proven to be an asset to any endeavor she partakes in. Her numerous civic commitments are a reflection of her dedication to planning, social, and economic issues. Her professional careers in social work, public service, education, nonprofit management, and hospital finance has given her a well-rounded background where she celebrates and appreciates everyone's unique circumstances and diversity. When Maybel is not blazing a trail to meet her clients' real estate dreams, marketing a property or negotiating contracts, or doting over her family, she is an active community as the Vice President of the Jefferson Elementary School District Board, and loves to spend quality time with her family. Maybel tends to her personal life by hiking in many Bay Area trails and frequents local coffee shops and spas when they're open. So that's just a bit of Maybel, and she's excited to be on board and get to work. So thank you so much, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there any other comments? Okay, Ray, did I hear you?
Yeah, I seconded.
Oh, okay, thank you so much. Okay, so on the motion for appointment to the Small Businesses Administration Commission, Maybel Manuel, that motion is on the floor. All those in favors, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that motion carries. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, any other board commission, membership, or committee appointments at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Lauren Douse to the Library Board of Trustees. She's, her term is ending this month, so I'd like to reappoint her for another term.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, and I guess we all know of the service that Ms. Lauren Douse has been, has provided, and so there wouldn't be a need to provide any additional information. Does any of the other council members have any comments before we take the vote? Okay, all those in favor on the motion for appointment of Ms. Lauren Douse to the Library Commission, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion has passed, and congratulations. Thank you. Are there any other appointments this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to reports, council committee reports. Item number eight.
Yes, I have, I have some committee reports, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Dr. Rod, please go, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, so I just want to acknowledge a new member to the Peninsula Clean Energy. We extended our membership to the City of Los Bajos. It's far out, but then I think they want to be part of PCE because there is also growing interest of starting a CCA in Central California, and bringing them in gives them the experience and, as a city, to make headway towards that direction. So that was one, I just want to just go ahead and acknowledge that for my report.
Okay, Dr. Rod. Thank you so much. For those of you who don't know, PCE is a CCA. And having someone learn from us, because we've been, not us, but PCE, it's an excellent choice to have Los Bajos up. I got a question for you, Dr. Rod. I'm familiar with Los Bajos, and I'm just wondering, has PCE created any solar farms there?
Not that I know of, but I know that they are talking about other places to have solar, solar farms and other renewable energy sources. So that's been in the conversations.
Thank you for that. I do recall that what has made us successful, I'm sorry, I keep saying us, but PCE is the getting of contract for future solar farms. And that forward thinking and having you on the board to take part in that is very important, and that is what has made PCE so successful. All right, any other reports, Dr. Rod?
That's it for now.
Thank you so much. I have one, mosquito abatement. Basically, everything remains the same. The Dr. Chindi Peavy has retired, and the new director, after an extensive interview, has came from within. So we're going to move forward, and they are financially stable at this time. If you recall, few years back, they had some issues in the spending of funds and folks accessing funds, but that has since changed. And Stephen had me do a PSA regarding Daily City obtaining high marks on the CAFRA report. And mosquito abatement, they too have received it, so we're doing very well there. Okay, any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to add one more from PCE.
Okay, okay, I got you going, Dr. Rod, go ahead.
Little bullet points that are all out of order. So if you are interested into making the switch to electronic vehicles, and you're in the market for a new car, and if you live in San Mateo County, you can purchase your first EV through PCE will offer you a seven hundred dollar rebate for new plug-in hybrid electric vehicles or a thousand dollar rebate for new all battery vehicles. This rebate is only available for eligible EVs purchased from October first through December thirty-first. And I'll put the link here on the chat if you are interested.
That's great news, Dr. Rod. I know PG&E offers rebates as well, and so you might as well take advantage of that, but if PCE is offering it, that's even better. And thank you for that. I think we got to keep letting folks know that that rebate is out there because as per Governor Newsom, the year twenty thirty-five, if I'm still around, you can't buy any more gas cars. So I might as well get with it. All right. Anything else, Dr. Rod? Thank you so much. All right, the next item is council committee meetings. September twenty-fifth through the, September twenty-eighth through the twenty-fifth. I don't think there were any that I saw on the agenda. Does any, did anyone have a meeting? Betsy, I see Betsy's online. Did we meet the past two weeks, Betsy? Am I forgetting something?
I think we did have the CDBG CV three.
Yeah, we met, the CDBG Advisory Committee met to talk about CDBG CV three.
Oh, oh, very important. Thank you so much. When you do so much, things just fly right by. I'll give a brief intro, and please, Betsy, or Ms. Mother's Head, or Dr. Rod, please chime in. I believe we received additional funds through CDBG, and the committee meets to find out how to disperse the funds, and subsequently, they were segregated, or what's the right word, separated into two different categories based upon how we receive them. I believe it was CDBG, and I'm going off the top of my head, COVID three or
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and COVID four. So, and Betsy, would you kindly advise the rest of council what we decide to do, Dr. Rod and I?
The decision was made to take some time to analyze needs throughout the community for what would be the best investment of the funds. We talked about additional rental assistance, for which we know there's demand, but there are potentially other uses such as COVID nineteen isolation housing, potentially within a hotel, possibly assisting other organizations who want to provide and install COVID nineteen precautions like Plexiglas dividers and things of that nature. And then the idea of some kind of assistance to organizations or entities providing COVID nineteen mental health services came up too. So we're gonna take the next six or eight weeks to do some research and analyze and hope to be back with the committee in December or January, and with a presentation to the full council towards the end of January or February.
Excellent. Dr. Rod, did you have anything further, or did Betsy cover it?
I think that's covered it. I, you know, with this additional funds, we can, there's a spectrum of needs that that those resources can go to in the city of Daily City, and we're just trying further and in terms of the discussion to really have more bank, not bank for the buck, but to really see where the needs are in our community and give those resources, resources out there.
Thank you, Dr. Rod, and I know a question is burning in everyone's mind. Betsy, would you let us know how much funds, possibility?
Just over a million dollars.
Okay, thank you so much. So, thank you. So any other committee reports? Tatum is smiling. Am I forgetting something, Tatum? Do we have another one?
No, I can't think of another one.
All right, thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. O'Bell, for being here and, and reminding me. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, let me scroll back up and see what's the next item here. Hold on. All right, the next item on the agenda is the city council, city council. Any, anything from city council, like events or gatherings? Or anything else that you would like to report?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, yeah, you know, although Make a Difference Day was different this time around, the city still did an amazing job providing services to residents as far as, you know, getting paper shredding and also electronic E-Waste. And I know that there was lengthy lines to be able to participate in that respect. I want to say thank you to the staff. It was a well-coordinated event, really, also to Republic Services, and I can tell that people were waiting for, to be able to do their part. And I know that sometimes we have it many times over, and one resident's like, oh, I was waiting for when we would have this date, right? And so to see such engaged residents was really nice, and I just want to say thank you. It was very smooth and very collaborative with all the staff. Thank you. Wonderful job, city manager, and everyone involved on having another Make a Difference Day for our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to begin by acknowledging that October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which first began in nineteen eighty-one for the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence as a day of unity to connect battered women's advocates across the country. Domestic violence affects millions, both women and men of every race, religion, culture, and status. It's not just punches and black eyes, it's yelling, humiliation, stalking, manipulation, coercion, threats, and isolation. It's stealing a paycheck, keeping tabs online, nonstop texting, constant use of silent treatment, recalling someone's, calling people names like stupid so much that they often sometimes believe it. Since the Violence Against Women's Act passed in nineteen ninety-four, we've come a long way. This landmark legislation combined new provisions that hold offenders accountable and provide programs and services for victims. Between nineteen ninety-three and two thousand and ten, the overall rate of domestic violence dropped nearly two-thirds, and state laws have reformed to address issues such as dating abuse in the workplace, stalking, employment, discrimination, and more. Nearly three out of four Americans personally knows someone who or has been a victim of domestic violence, including in workplaces. Now is time to take a stand, support survivors, and speak out against domestic violence all this month and continue forward. So I'd like to acknowledge that for October, and also to support, I mean, to piggyback on Vice Mayor, what she said, that I remember about the Make a Difference Day, and it was shredding, document shredding, of course, in E-Waste. But I want to thank Leilani, Officer Ortiz, the cadets, Republic Services, the gentleman that was doing the, the E-Waste, and how the conversation with him was about, he's going to be connecting with Leilani, and he was telling us in conversation that other cities, even though it's hard for us to believe, that we were considered forward thinkers. So I want to let my colleagues know in the city that for us, it's normal, and we've been having these events often. But he was surprised me that those in California, that he was very happy to be here, and he happens to be one of the most responsible ones for E-Waste, and I want to applaud Stephen Stolti for making that connection, and for someone that is totally responsible, and brought him on board when he was sustainability. So, Mr. Stolti, big shout out to you. Doesn't surprise me that you did your research when you partnered up with people, looking forward to Leilani obtaining information. He said he'll be contacting her, so she's going to include it in her educational plan. And this part of people participating and bringing so much E-Waste will help our dumping issue. It's not a solving issue, but it's a particular part of it, and I know that they are going to be working more in the educational field and look forward to that. So thank you for the smoothness, the outreach, and everything, and looking forward, Leilani and Stephen for more, hearing from that gentleman from E-Waste, and bravo. So thank you to the community, and indeed, this helped them during COVID as well mentally, and their household is lighter. But there's some of them even mentioned that mentally, this and emotionally, this helped them getting the document shredding as well. So our city is really forward-thinking, and for us, it's normal, but it's nice to hear that feedback, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, council member.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
I have one more, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rod, please. Dr. Rod, please.
So, October is also Philippine-American History Month. We're heading into our last week, and I am gonna be part of this monthly, I guess, event that they throw that's co-sponsored by Skyline College, the Filipino Mental Health Initiative of San Mateo County. And so, if you want to get involved, it's called the Daly City Bayanihan Showcase, and this theme for this month is Fiesta. And if you're interested, you can go and plug this in at tinyurl.com/dalyacityopenmic. If you're interested in, you know, seeing some speakers, seeing some performers, I heard there's gonna be a really cool speaker, which is myself. I'm gonna be talking about Philippine-American History Month, and I have a couple of other friends that are performing too, and they're all like, most of the folks here that are performing are, you know, local Daly City homegrown artists. So, if you have time, check it out on Wednesday from, let me see what time it was, from 5:30 to 7:30 Wednesday, October 28th. All right, that's it for me.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. You know, we had two folks speak of Make a Difference Day. I didn't actually see the lines or what was happening there, but I was nearby around the corner. And after hearing my colleague speak, it brought me to a memory or the famous saying by the postal service. "No matter rain, sleet, wind, or hail, it still goes on." So, thank you very much, Daly City. Okay, moving on. Oh, anything else from city council? Okay, we're almost there, folks. Staff, staff reports, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just very quickly, we, obviously unprecedented times, but we still want to honor our workforce who've been working really hard and being very creative during this time to keep our community safe and engaged in different ways than we were last year. Last year, we were doing all sorts of festivities and barbecues and gearing up for the holidays. But I just want to honor all of our awardees this year for their service, honor the entire workforce, and thank you, council. Each of you took the time to do a little video commentary to our workforce to tell our workforce how much you appreciate them, and each of the departments are kind of handling their own event in their own departments to be safe, but we're compiling it into one video, and we'll have that available to council with all of your comments as well. So, thank you for participating and for being there as always to support our staff.
Thank you, Ms. Mopie. Any comments from Ms. Mopie? Okay, again, I'll say thank you, Ms. Mopie, and the sign of a true leader. Thank you so much for your leadership. A happy staff is a good working staff, and you've done a tremendous job, given the circumstances that we have experienced this past year. And it doesn't go unnoticed, and I'm happy that council took the time to speak about honoring our staff and its workers. So, that's what keeps Daly City moving, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. I do have, let me see, a couple of names here on the list. So, I'll start off with Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like it heartbreaking that Lamong D. Bruce, he was a fire arson investigator for the Houston Fire Department. He was only 44 years old, who is married with a 12-year-old and an eight-year-old, and he was doing surveillance on fire arsons in their community when he was being followed and an armed suspect opened fire and killed him. Very sad. And sadly to report that the POA of Riverside has reported that one of their detectives, Ronald Newton, succumbed to cancer, lost his battle. He happens to be the second police officer that has passed away with cancer in 2020. The other detective was Aaron Grant. So, and I wanted to say, because our mayor is retired, SFPD especially, that condolences to you as well, Mr. Mayor, because I know that law enforcement family is always family. So, let me express my condolences to you as well on the loss of these two detectives.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni, and thank you for that comment. Very much appreciated. I just got some additional information, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rod at this time. Dr. Rod?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It comes with a very, very heavy heart that we close in memory of one of my former students, Melvin Factor. When I used to work at the Filipino Community Center in the Excelsior neighborhood in San Francisco, he was one of the youth that used to come after school, and he would participate in the hip-hop workshops, or we would play basketball in our makeshift basketball court in the second level when it was in the old Filipino Community Center. He was a fixture at all the different Filipino-American festivals around the Bay Area, and I have a statement from his brother and family. "Hello, everyone. Melvin Factor passed away on February, October 16, 2020, at around 6:15 a.m. He was found at their community swimming pool. Melvin was pure at heart. He intended to act with kindness and love to others and to shine a light when they were falling out of hope. He became a role model for many of his peers and to our loved ones in the Philippines. Melvin was a rap artist, a language magician, who was an ultimate being. His art of words made him fearless and powerful, unstoppable with universal power. He wanted to express his rap to the world and show unconditional love to everyone, allowing people to love each other with raw emotion. Many of us were devastated to bear the news of Melvin. None of us could bear the thought that he is no longer with us. In this family, we are no strangers to mental health. When Melvin suffered confusion, depression, or madness, we would be there to listen and comfort him. We would listen to his agonizing pain and anguish in his mind, but now he no longer has to suffer. God can deliver him to love, love him and what he deserves. He found him an eternal home and happiness for his spirit. The family can still feel his spirit, and he is still present with the family. He may have suffered intensely through mental health, but at a time, we were able to guide and enlighten his path. Even now, it feels as though he lives, he lives with the rest of us, and we can still feel his love and his glowing infinite in power. We would like to take this moment to thank everyone who knew Melvin, from having the best of memories to having the cheerful smiles. All of the friends and family who helped shape Melvin were the ones who built him a world of universal love. Thank you all. And if you want to help out the Factor family, they have a GoFundMe account at www.gofundme.com/f/cant-do-it-myself. Rest in peace, Melvin."
Thank you, Dr. Rod, and thank you for sharing. Vice Mayor Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also adjourn in memory for Cesar A. Sanchez Jr., who was born on August 24, 1984, and passed away on August 22, 2020. And really sending continued healing for his family and loved ones who are my neighbors across the street and this unexpected death for Cesar Senior's son. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did you say 1984?
Yes.
Wow, so that's 36 years old. Okay, thank you for sharing that. Are there any other adjourned memories at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to pause for a brief moment of silence. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is now adjourned. Stay healthy, stay strong. We are Daly City Strong, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Good night.
We have a housing meeting, Mr. Mayor. Sorry.
Do we? Who said that? Was that the city attorney?
Yes, sorry.
Oh, no, no, I'm not sorry. No, because I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Madam City Attorney.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, I'm sure, I'm glad you caught me. I was about to click that button.
You can call, I don't have it.
Well, I like to, I like to call.
Housing Finance Agency meeting agenda?
Yes, I'd like to call the Daly City Housing Finance Agency agenda to order. And do I, do we need a roll call on this?
Yes, we should take a roll call.
Yes, okay. Madam City Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you so much. Okay, and I'd like to move on with the agenda. Stephen, you have the agenda there?
Yes, so the next thing is the approval of the minutes from July 27, 2020.
I'm surprised I didn't get that. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from July of 2020?
Motion to approve minutes for July 2020?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Stephen, would you call the next item, please?
Yes, it is a resolution to extend timeframe for loan agreement between Daly City Housing Development Finance Agency and SHP Foundation for a property located at 115 to 131 East Mulkey Street and 260 Abbott.
Thank you. I do recall, I think I did read that. And would that be Ms. O'Bell and Tatum?
That's correct.
Okay, please.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Agency Board Members. Before you tonight is a request to extend the timeframe for the conditional loan agreement between SHP Foundation and the Daly City Housing Finance Agency. The loan agreement was originally executed in 2018 and will provide a total of $2.9 million in housing trust funds for the acquisition and rehabilitation of 21 units located on East Mulkey and Abbott Street. The loan, when dispersed, will result in the preservation of 21 units of rental housing for very low-income families. In recent weeks, staff has been advised by outside counsel and our redevelopment consultant that transfer of the five Abbott units from the city to SHP Foundation, a critical part of the loan agreement, must be carried out according to redevelopment dissolution law. This was an unanticipated bump in the road to getting this deal closed and has resulted in delays in financing, finalizing the loan documents. Combined with COVID-19-related delays in getting rehab bids, staff is recommending that the conditional loan commitment be extended for an additional four months to allow staff and the developer to ensure that the final loan documents comply with all redevelopment requirements. And we have with us tonight Candace Gonzalez from SHP Foundation. If you have questions, and I'm available for questions as well.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bell. Okay, do we have any questions pertaining to this matter of Ms. O'Bell or the applicant, Ms. Candace Gonzalez? Okay, I will ask a question of Ms. Gonzalez. Ms. Gonzalez, could you just give a brief synopsis of what's happening on Mulkey Street? In other words, so that the council members know that I believe this was a rehabilitation project and to keep some of our very, very low-income folks within their homes, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and city council members. The SHP Foundation purchased the site a couple of years ago to bridge it for a nonprofit. The nonprofit never closed on it, but we decided to keep it in order to not displace the lower-income residents that are living there. So, you know, we're looking forward to the rehabilitation. There's been some delays, as Betsy said, because of COVID-19 and getting the bids onsite, plus a little bit of a glitch with the redevelopment agency. But the goal is to keep the residents onsite and not displace anybody.
Excellent. Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Gonzalez? I think Vice Mayor, you were with me on that committee as well, weren't you?
Yes, yes, Mayor, and I guess the other question I have is, what is the anticipated timeline?
Right now, we're still in the middle of solidifying at least three different bids, and then I think Betsy would probably know what the timeline is to try to resolve the RDA site, the Abbott site for the transfer. You know, we don't, we don't want to move tenants out, so it's going to be a little bit of a slow process because we have one vacant unit. We'll move, move them over, shuffle around one at a time rather than doing like a mass one-time rehab, and I think that will be less disruptive for the tenants. So, we'll, we'll get that as soon as we have the bid solidified and the contractors giving us an idea of the relocation, the temporary process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, did I answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, I mean, I'm definitely in support of this project. You know, with affordable housing, we know it's pretty comprehensive as far as building more housing, sustaining housing, and this has been one of those very unique opportunities to be able to keep people in their homes. And I think it's a job well done. These units won't go to the market and working in partnership with you, Candace, and your organization, we hope to see this be there in perpetuity. So, thank you.
Thank you too.
Okay, are there any other questions of Ms. O'Bell or Ms. Gonzalez? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to extend the lease for this, I'm sorry, extend the agreement for an additional four months so that we give this project a chance to move and get going.
Motion to extend, okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor. Motion to extend the agreement for four months?
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Is there a second? I will second the motion. Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay.
Just one question. I think the recommendation was for the four months plus two automatic extensions, Betsy?
Okay.
Does that have to be moved as well?
Is that a separate motion, Betsy, or, you know?
Rose, I don't think it's a separate motion, is it?
No, it's not necessary. It'll be included as part of the resolution that the extensions are at the discretion of the city manager.
Okay.
Got it, got it. Thank you for the clarification, Madam City Attorney. Okay, any further questions? Okay, on the motion, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Thank you so much. It's unanimous that motion carries. Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. O'Bell for hanging in there. Thank you so much. Okay, is there any other further items, Stephen?
The last item on the agenda is public appearances and oral communications, and we do not have any public comment.
Thank you so much, Stephen. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is now adjourned. And as, again, be safe and stay healthy until we meet again. And as, again, be safe and stay healthy. And until we meet again, have a great evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aye. Thank you.